The November 21st City of Vandelia City Council meeting will now come to order. We'll have a moment of reflection followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Council, you have before you the budget workshop minutes of October the 19th, the budget workshop minutes of October the 20th, the budget workshop minutes of October the 25th, the council study session minutes of November the 7th, and the council meeting minutes of November the 7th. Are there any corrections or revisions to be made to by any of those? Then they'll stand as approved. We have no communications petitions or awards this evening, nor do we have any public hearings. And that brings us to the comments from interested citizens. And we just ask that you come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and your comments. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Heidi Sipple. I'm at 104 North Perry here in Vandelia. I have a petition from my fellow residents on Perry, and I'll just read you the little statement. As a resident of the city of Vandelia, I would like to make a formal request to add a no semi truck sign to our road on North Perry Street and Clay Street, that's a cross section, and enforce the, what I believe is already existing code. In recent years, there was an addition of the furniture store at 128 North Dixie Drive. The semi trucks that deliver to there, which are not short bed trucks, they're full semi trucks, not only frequently come down our small residential road, but they commonly back down our road, which is not a short road either. And when they get to the furniture store, they make four point turns in the tiny little intersection. That's resulted in a number of damages to vehicles on the street. Nobody ever stops and tells us whom has done that. It's knocked down one of my trees, it pushes over your road signs, it's done damage to the road on both sides, and one of my neighbors has even had to backfill your road with gravel. Definitely yard damage to everybody on the corner. They can't make their turns without driving in our yards. It's also been a danger to the kids. They drive very quickly down the road, and then they back up in a very low visibility area. They cannot see, they've hit one of my children's bikes, and my children who were riding in the road have had to rush themselves out of the way. Not to be melodramatic, but it is not pleasant with the semi trucks down there. It's a very common occurrence. Today alone, there were three semi trucks, all three of them drove in my yard. I made one police report, trying not to overburden the police coming out every day. I spoke personally with the owner of the, first the manager, who was a young fella and was not very receptive to my request to do it in a different way. So I spoke with the owner, who tried to come to some resolution with posting something for the drivers, but it's a number of vendors, can be any different vendor on a day, Ashley Furniture Delivery Companies coming. And so while they try and make drivers that come aware, they can't reach them all. So I don't think that they're doing, making any effort anymore to try and come to a resolution. The police aren't able to do anything for us because there's no sign for enforcement or other things that can happen down there. So we all signed the petition. I don't know if that's helpful, what difference that makes, but we'd like to request that we have some help there in Perry.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. And our city manager, I'm asking you to work with her and to see what can be done, because I don't know what the rules or laws are for posting a sign like that in residential.
Yeah, Rob Cron, our public service director, and also our police chief, and take a look. I know we've been out there before. We've had a couple other complaints about trucks.
Yeah.
Accessing the furniture store.
Sure.
Where is this at?
It's the furniture store at the north end of Perry.
The furniture store, actually storefront faces Dixie. Perry is the one just past BP there, the little churches on the corner where the little side road there.
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah.
And the big issue is, is being able to access the loading dock.
Right.
Back.
I asked originally, and I understand, but, I mean, my original request from the owner was that the trucks just drive forward down our street and then make the turn there at the alley. They still do damage to the gravel and to the trees on the other property, but they don't have to make four point turns in reverse down in the neighborhood. And that would mean for them that they have to unload the truck there and then dolly the things about 10 feet away rather than just unloading it into the store. But I thought a good compromise.
You certainly have done your homework and have tried to work with the owner and to have some solutions to a problem that apparently is yours.
Try. You were not my first stop. Do you want these?
Actually, if you give that to Rob Cron, he'll take those. He's in the second row.
Yeah.
Rob will get them from him, and then we'll be back in touch with you.
Okay, thank you. And my number's on here.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to make comment? Seeing none, we'll go on to the city manager's report. No information items, but we have some action items. Mr. Cruzey.
Well, the first item, again, it's, we have board and commission appointments. The first one is Erin Hathaway. Erin is currently an alternate member on the Housing Code Board of Appeals, and he's requesting appointment as a regular member to the Housing Code Board of Appeals.
Great. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Erin Hathaway to a regular member as opposed to an alternate member of the Housing Code Board of Appeals.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Gerhardt, second by Councilman Herbst, that we do approve Erin Hathaway to be appointed as a regular member as opposed to an alternate member to the boards, to the Housing Code Board of Appeals. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Mr. Cruzey, we have another board and commission appointment.
Yes, Your Honor, again, the next appointment is Mr. Gordon Jackson to the Golf Advisory Board. Council has received a copy of his application and had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Jackson just prior to this meeting during your study session.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Mr. Gordon Jackson appointed to the Golf Advisor Board.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Blakeslee, second by Councilwoman Fars, that we do approve Gordon Jackson to the Golf Advisory Board. Any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. The first resolution for this evening is Resolution 16-R-95. Mr. McDonald, by title only, please.
Resolution 16-R-95, a resolution authorizing cooperation and contacts with the Ohio Department of, contracts, excuse me, with the Ohio Department of Transportation regarding the mill and resurfacing on Airport Access Road, PID number 103062.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, this legislation is required by ODOT to complete its programming to mill and resurface Airport Access Road in state fiscal year 18. The project will be funded 79% by ODOT and 21% by Vandelia. ODOT's maximum contribution toward the project will be $691,000. The city's responsible for all costs in excess of that. We're also responsible for 100% of the engineering and design cost, which we estimate at about $65,000. Again, this project is only for the resurfacing of the road. We have submitted a separate application for the repairs to the bridge, and we should be finding out about those early next year.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 16-R-95 as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Councilwoman Fars, second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve Resolution 16-R-95 as presented. Comments from other councilmembers? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Resolution 16-R-95, excuse me. Mr. McDonald.
16-R-96, a resolution awarding the bid for municipal refuse collection and disposal services to Rumke of Ohio, Inc. as the lowest and best bidder.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, the city received two bids for this item. Council discussed the two proposals and heard from representative from both vendors at your October 17th meeting. During council's follow-up study session on November 7th, council determined that Rumke did submit the lowest and best bid and directed staff to prepare the necessary legislation for a five-year agreement. This contract will eliminate the need for residents to purchase yard waste bags. Yard waste will be able to be placed in the refuse container or set out in a generic yard waste bag on their regular collection day.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 16-R-96.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Ayers, second by Councilman Gerhardt, that we do approve Resolution 16-R-96. Comments from council? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gerhardt.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. Our first, we have ordinance in their first reading this evening, and the first one is 16-35. Mr. McDonald.
Ordinance 16-35, an ordinance converting $2,114 in the fire equipment fund that was previously advanced from the general fund as part of a temporary advance for the new fire engine from advanced funds to transferred funds.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Well, that about explains it all. Yeah, I guess, so this ordinance will convert $2,114 in the fire equipment fund from the temporary advance to a transfer from the general fund. And the purpose is to cover the cost of the fire engine that exceeds the amount that was financed with bond anticipation notes. So the cost of the, the cost of the truck was 482,114, and we borrowed $480,000, so we're short $2,114.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance 16-35 in its first reading.
Second. It's been moved by Councilwoman Fars, second by Councilman Gerhardt, that we do approve ordinance 16-35 in its first reading. Would anybody like to give further explanation? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. Ordinance 16-36, Mr. McDonald.
16-36, an ordinance amending Section 104211, Schedule of Rates Dealing with Water Rates, and Section 104406D1, Wastewater Service Charge, dealing with wastewater of the codified ordinances of the city of Vandelia.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. During the recently completed 2017 budget review meetings, it was discussed with council that while the water fund balance does meet its target fund balance at the end of 2021, the water fund balance is declining and will not be able to support a continued level of capital improvements past 2021. In contrast, the sewer fund balance is well above its target fund balance and is projected to continue to increase over the five-year period. Staff recommended that council consider a water rate increase and an equivalent decrease in the sewer rates. The goal is to adjust rates in such a manner so as to minimize as much as possible the impact on a customer's monthly bill. And this would allow needed capital improvements to continue in our water system while also maintaining healthy, stable fund balances in both funds. So council did review options to adjust water and sewer rates at your November 7th study session. They recommended the following. So water rate rates on average would increase about 11% in 2017, and the sewer rates, again, the water treatment portion only of the sewer rate on average would reduce, be reduced about nine and a half to 10% in 2017. So the effect of this would be for someone that receives the minimum bill, which is up to 2,500 gallons, would be a $1 additional cost per month. For our average residential customer at 7,500 gallons per month, the increase would be about $1.60 per month.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move that we approve ordinance 16-36.
Thank you. Second. Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Ayers, second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve ordinance 16-36 in its first reading. Comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. We have some ordinances in their second reading this evening, and the first one is 16-33. Mr. McDonald.
Ordinance 16-33, an ordinance approving a major amendment to the planned unit development for the property located at 400 National Road and owned by Maxxus Sports and Spirits, Inc. in the downtown business district with a PUD overlay.
Thank you. Since this is an ordinance in its second reading, I am opening a public hearing for it. So if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make comment, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and your comment.
My name is Kevin Thomas. I'm the owner of Maxxus Sports and Spirits, and I'm also the general manager of the company that would be doing the development on the patio should it be accepted. I'd like to tell you that a couple of things with this. The biggest thing with this patio is it will bring the people all together instead of scattering out throughout the front smoking. It's mainly going to be used as a gathering area. One of the biggest issues we have is when people go out to smoke, because the law has now said they cannot smoke in the property anymore, they're going in the front, they're going on the sides, they're going everywhere. The positive thing with this smoking ordinance is I can gear anywhere on that property for them to go. Prime example, PNC Bank, they're not allowed to smoke anywhere on the property. Prime example, the Dollar General, they can only smoke in one area on the property. If this is approved, my area is going to be the patio only. It's the only place they can smoke. They're not to smoke coming into the place, they're not to smoke in the front, they're not to smoke anywhere on my property. Besides the fact of just gathering it and making it more manageable for me to watch these clientele, it will also enhance this property tremendously. And when I say tremendously, I mean tremendously. With me being a developer, this patio, if I was to quote it to somebody, would be well over 40,000 to 45,000. We're not putting on wood sticks, we're not putting on a cheap awning, we're putting on a full patio with a full footer, with a full steel, metal, everything. My cost fortunately for me is only going to be 20,000 to 25,000 because I own Meerkat Construction, I'm the general manager. I can develop it a lot cheaper. Second thing is, what happens once you inherit a brand-new part of a building to an old building? It makes the rest of the building look bad. I'm now put in a position to where I need to enhance the rest of this building. I'm in the position to do it. I'm in the position to make the rest of this building look like my patio. And so I'm asking you guys to approve this, and I appreciate the last reading of the four to three, but I'm telling you, all it's going to do is enhance the property and make this property more manageable for me. Thank you.
A quick question. If you'll, if you're going to put the patio on, you're going to designate that as a non-smoking area, what would prohibit you from designating a particular area without the patio as a non-smoking area?
No, the patio would be a smoking area.
As a smoking area.
As, pardon me, as a smoking area. What, it seems to me a contradiction. You could designate an area without the patio as the smoking area just as easily as you can do it with the patio.
The smoking, the smoking requirements are, it has to be basically an area that's either closed off or an area that's, I can't say, okay, you can smoke on the right-hand side of my building, 20 feet out and 30 feet over. Now, what I can do is I could put cones out there and say you have to smoke in this area, but KIP and inspectors will not like that out there. So I have to have some type of enclosed area for these people to be designated to go to.
Kevin, you're going to put an awning over it. It's 10 by 20.
Correct.
As I understand it, is the, is the fencing itself, or the patio railing, I should say, is that the wrought iron railing?
It's identical to bunkers. It's the exact same patio. So it does have the iron on it, yes. It will not be wood. My intention is to put a fixture here that, one, is going to be maintenance-free to where I'm not going to have to sit there and stain this thing every five years. It's going to be a concrete patio flooring, not wood, nothing like that. It's going to be an A1 patio, and identical, it's going to be to bunkers. And if you guys have been there, that's what we're copying, identical. And the crushes has helped us develop it.
Any other questions for him? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who?
I'm here.
Okay.
I didn't know it was on the agenda, but...
I still need your name and address for our record.
Heidi Sipple, 104 North Perry. I support any improvements to it. It sounds like, I think the patio really did a lot for bunkers as well, and to, if you've driven by there or been out and you notice the people all over, so patio sounds nice, and then doing remodeling to it and all the things that would add to it sound like it would be nice for the community. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor, I recommend denial of ordinance 16-33 in its second reading.
Second. There's a motion to deny ordinance 16-33 in its second meeting, or its second reading, and the motion was made by Councilman Herbst and second by Councilwoman Fars. Are there any comments?
Yes, I've got a couple of concerns with this, and the reason I'm having trouble supporting it is because this is a non-conforming building in a non-conforming area. Bars and taverns would be 200 feet from residential area, okay? This building is already 100 feet, so it's non-conforming, and we're being asked to expand it. Another concern I have with this is how visible it's going to be from Route 40, and also the close proximity to the KFC drive-thru. Those are my concerns with it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I think the visibility to 40 is somewhat of a stretch. You've got several bars or establishments, dining establishments in the city of Vandelia that have drinking areas a lot closer to 40 than what this exists. The second thing is, I mean, it is non-conforming, but it is, it is what it is. It's already there, and so enhancing it, I think, would, would just make things better.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Your Honor, I've waffled back and forth on this issue three times since we voted a couple of weeks ago. I am, I'm pondering this, and I still, I'm going back to my original vote just to let everybody know, because I do, while I think Mr. Herbst makes a very valid point that we, in essence, we are expanding, expanding a non-conforming use, which is contrary to public policy. On the other side, I think the overriding issue here is, is you've got a bar that exists that we already have zoned, it's going to be an improvement, and I can't believe having people smoke in one particular place is not better than having them smoking and in the parking lot and walking around. And so while I think Mr. Herbst has made really a very good point, I think the other consideration overrides it. I've changed my mind again, and I'm going to support the, support the ordinance.
Can I make another comment, please?
Sure.
I would have less trouble supporting this if it was on the southeast portion of this building, where it wouldn't be visible. Apparently, that's not an option. I take it.
It's not so much that it's not an option, that would be a possibility. The issue we would have then is it would come out into the Muffler Brothers area to where we would limit that parking in the front there. I've already let Waffle House park on my lot up top there, and the more we come out and protrude out from the front of that, it limits that, that parking area right there. Obviously, my, my goal is to get a patio here. I mean, if that's where the council wants it to go, I will try to do the best I can. It's just with, with everything and, you know, putting in the front, we will limit the parking back there, or in the front part, and then the back part, there's a lot of open space there that's just not going to be used. And the main thing with that patio being back there is, that patio will, the noise from that patio will never generate as much noise that's coming from the speaker from KFC.
Right.
KFC is 55 feet in front of me before they even hit the residential. And so that's why we had geared it in that area, just because, one, there won't be any sound up there as far as radio, there will be no type of TV out there, and there'll be no type of entertainment out there. It's mainly going to be a holding area for the people to smoke.
Can I comment?
Sure.
My concern's not necessarily the sound, it's the close proximity to the KFC drive-thru. When you have a family pulling through there, windows down, kids in the car, you're what, 10 feet away from their drive-thru?
No, we're a little bit further than that, but 25, 25, 30.
Well, I mean, the distance in the building's that, but by the time you put your patio on, it's going to be pretty, pretty darn close.
Dragon China in proximity to bunkers is far closer.
I would...
To drive-through would be. You're going in and out of Dragon China, and that whole patio is there with lots of smoke and lots of TVs and sound, and the residential neighbors are much closer to bunkers than they are to on-air, too.
The other thing is, too, is the patio, we would not have a problem with, one of the things that bunkers has, and we did not put it on this drawing here, but we would like to eventually have it, is we could close that part off with, like, they have that hard plastic that they, they close down.
Plexiglass.
And we could close that off that way, and then that, then they would not see that at all. And then our openings would be more on the sides for the ventilation.
Yeah, I spoke with the gentleman from the muffler shop this afternoon, and, you know, the side of his building is, which he owns, because right now it's empty, and because I asked him, who owns that piece? And he said, I do. He's going to put overhead doors in there, and he's going to expand his building and open up. So I think that putting it in the back, you not only have the electrical, you know, all the boxes back there, that type of equipment, but it's also going to bring it out farther that he's going to need that space, because traffic's going to be flowing in and out of there. Once he, once he opens that area up with the overhead doors, cars pulling in, backing out, et cetera.
One other thing, too, I want to say is...
You know, I, I am going to have to ask you, if this discussion is going to go any further, we need to come up to the mic so that we can capture, and I'm sorry about that. I should have stopped you before.
One of the big things, too, that I want to say is, is the backside of that patio, we can enhance that, or we can conform whatever we, you guys would like us to do there. I think that ultimately, that's probably the best place, and I will tell you that...
Behind.
Right, right now.
Southeast side, what you're talking about.
In the back, in the back, yeah, yes. And right now, if the people, if the people are going there and going through KFC, what they're seeing is, is they're seeing people just walking around there and no enclosure or anything. They're just out there smoking, flicking their cigarette butts, and KIP, I'm sure you guys knew who KIP is, that, he's writing, coming to me probably once a week and just saying, hey, Kevin, can you do the cigarette butts? He's been nice enough not to write me for violations, but on a regular basis, I'm cleaning up that back area more, and if I could have, and I don't want to put an ashtray out there, because then that's going to gear them to go around back, and I don't want them around back smoking unless I have some type of camera system or that patio there, because if something should happen, my barmaids can't get around back. And we will be having entrances from the inside to be able to go back to that patio But we're, I'm open for any options. But we're, I'm open for any options. I'll close that off or whatever. I mean, I'm in favor of it as is, but you're willing to enhance it like bunkers, where they have the green at the bottom and the Plexiglass that keeps the wind from blowing. Yep. To then even further insulate the drive-thru. Exactly. And as far as the, the green and everything, that's already going to be there. It's just, the only thing we would be out is the Plexiglass. And I will tell you, by doing this work for over twenty-some years, I have to find out, but they may have some type of tinted Plexiglass, which would darken it a little bit more. But when you're on the street and you're twenty feet away from bunkers anyways, all you can see is bodies. I don't think you can really see exactly into the Plexiglass. But again, I don't want to quote that and then be telling you something, and then you drive out there and say, that guy lied to me, so I'm not really sure. But I'd be willing to put something up there that would close that back end off to where...
I would agree. Some sort of additional screening, I think, would be very helpful in this situation.
Okay.
I don't think we need to.
I have a question for the city manager and Mr. McDonald, and that is, a lot of discussion has been now for certain other additions and so forth to this. If we pass this as it is, would any of this discussion have any bearing on what happens?
Currently, we have a motion to...
Right.
...deny.
Right.
So, if we went through that process and that passed, everything would be over. If that was voted down, we would still, somebody would have to make a motion to approve it, and then they could make it part of their motion to approve it with the Plexiglass or whatever the improvement may be.
Does everybody understand?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Should we, are we ready to call the roll? Okay, call the roll.
Okay, and again, this, this, this is a motion to deny.
To deny.
Yes, yes, a vote of yes means no change, no patio.
Right.
Okay. Councilmember Ayers.
No.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
No.
Councilmember Gerhardt.
No.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Herps.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
No.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and so, the motion to deny is not approved.
That is correct.
Okay.
So, if we want somebody...
By a vote of three to four.
So, yes, but what we still have is a pending PUD ordinance, because nobody's made an motion to approve it.
I make a motion to approve ordinance sixteen dash thirty-three in its second reading, subject to additional screening in the form of Plexiglass, possibly tinted, to reduce visibility into this said patio by patrons of Kentucky Fried Chicken.
Second.
Is, is that specific enough, Mr. McDonald?
I, I think so.
Your Honor.
Okay. Our zoning official says she knows what it means, so we're good.
Okay, so it's been moved by Councilman Gerhardt, second by Councilman Ayers, to make some additional requirements to the original ordinance sixteen dash thirty-three in its second reading. Is that enough?
And that, that additional would be the addition of a Plexiglass-type screening on the side that faces the, the KFC drive-thru.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any, any further comments? Okay, call the roll.
Get my sheet ready here. Okay.
Sorry.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
No.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Herps.
No.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries four to three.
You would have voted no on that one.
I did. Oh, I, I said yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I wrote down no here.
Yeah, you're right.
Whoa, whoa, I, at least I had the count right.
So, yours wasn't, yours was a no, Your Honor?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Just like it is here on my paper.
Okay.
Okay.
So, sixteen thirty-three did pass four to three.
Uh-huh.
With, with the addition to Plexiglass addition. Okay, I got it straight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh-huh. Okay, let's see what we can do with ordinance sixteen dash thirty-four.
Sixteen thirty-four, an ordinance, an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Vandelia, Ohio during the calendar year ending December thirty-one, two thousand seventeen.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. This ordinance would adopt twenty seventeen appropriations. I said, City Council conducted three budget review workshops to evaluate and discuss the proposed budget, and they also received presentations from our department directors. This, again, this budget would include a little, or almost twenty-four million dollars in general fund appropriations, and a little more than forty-three million dollars in total appropriations.
Okay. Is there, since this is a, an ordinance in its second reading, once again, I will open up a public hearing, so if there is anyone in the audience who would like to make comment, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and then your statement? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move that we approve ordinance sixteen dash thirty-four in its second reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ayers, second by Councilman Herps, that we do approve ordinance sixteen dash thirty-four in its second reading. Comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gerhardt.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Herps.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. We have no emergency ordinances this evening, and that brings us to our board and our reports from our boards and commission with the civil service minutes of August the ninth, the planning commission minutes of October the twenty-fifth, the Vandelia Cultural Arts Draft Minutes of November the fifteenth. Any comments about any of those?
No.
We have our October twenty sixteen bill listing in the amount of two million four hundred and four thousand one hundred twenty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents. And that brings us to our council comments, beginning with Mr. McDonald.
And that is why I suggest we always make our ordinance motions in the past that we don't have to go through, is that a yes or no? But that's okay. I think we will.
You messed that up.
Other than that, no.
That, that wasn't the bad part. The bad part was the second part, which was in the positive, and then I just, it was my fault then, you know?
The bad part, you voted, then change your vote.
Yeah, but I had yes, and then I was doing yes and no, yes and no, and I put down my mark and said yes.
That's okay, you're sitting next to the...
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey.
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Okay. Let's start with Councilwoman Fars.
Um, just like to take the opportunity, I don't know if the rest of you got to watch Think TV and the art show last night at five o'clock, but they did a, a good job on portraying Vandelia Heavy Metal Remix. I used to thought it was only Rich Hopkins that could take out all my ums and ahs and